Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the April 2nd County Commission meeting. And hopefully you all survived April Fool's Day yesterday. There are some people that are just vicious on those kinds of days. Please silence your cell phones, if you will, and the meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly over there, and listening devices, if you need them, are with Robert. And Robert's here in the front row. Otherwise, we'll start with routine business.
The first item is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the routine business. Any other comments? If not, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
The next item is to approve the county commission minutes of March 26, 2013, and the joint Sioux Falls City and County minutes of March 26, 2013.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve both minutes. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
The next item are to approve bills to be paid in the amount of $306,854.33.
Move the bills.
Pay, our second, pay the bills.
We have a motion and a second to approve the $306,854.33. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no reports today. The next item is personnel. Item A is to approve the routine action.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jen Addox with Human Resources.
Anyone have any questions for Jen on the routine action?
I'll move routine action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve routine action. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for April 2013. Jenny.
In April, we had over 230 volunteers throughout a number of different departments in the county: the Sulan Heritage Museums, Public Defender's Office, State's Attorney's Office, and Emergency Management. So we just want to thank all the volunteers for giving their time to Minnehaha County.
Again, it's amazing to look through that list. Every time we see that list, it's an incredible resource to the community. And we thank those individuals who dedicate their free time, if you will, and volunteer to help everybody in this county. So thank you.
Item C is to recognize significant employee anniversaries. Did we do that one? I must have skipped.
Yes.
Okay.
Recognize volunteers. We have the anniversary. There were a number of anniversaries in April. Celebrating five years of service this year: Wallace Winiya from the Air Guard; Calvin Kastner, who's a correctional officer at the jail; Lori McGee and Katherine Emerson, also correction system operators at the jail, all celebrating five years of service. Celebrating 10 years is Kenneth Hedrick. He's a civil process server with the Sheriff's Office. And celebrating 20 years of service this year: Jason Guerman. He's a sergeant at the Sheriff's Office. Michelle Boyd, she's the chief deputy at the Sheriff's Office. And Angela Belfi, she's a corporal at the jail. Celebrating 30 years of service. And also with us here today is our Deputy Director of Equalization, Diane Ripkema. And we even have one for 35 years of service. She wasn't able to be here today. But Lynn Crowell, she's the Assistant Director at the Jubal Detention Center.
Awesome service. We do appreciate everything that you've done for us. I've been told that Diane, you kind of wanted to make a whole bunch of comments, or at least--
Yeah.
I plead the fifth. We really do appreciate your service. That's an incredible amount, and you've made a lot of positive changes as far as we're concerned to this organization. And we appreciate and value your input. So thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jen.
And the next item are application for abatement. Pam Nelson.
Good morning. Pam Nelson, the Treasurer's Office. We have two abatements today. ID number 18034 for the elderly assessment freeze, $518.85. And ID number 22377, the elderly assessment freeze for $600.29.
Motion to approve the elderly freezes.
Second.
Is there a second? Any questions for Pam? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
Item seven are notices and requests. Item A is to authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for beam procurement and delivery for Project MC-50-150-202-1, the Ellis Bridge Project. DJ Boothey.
Morning, DJ.
Morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This bid package is just for beam procurement, similar to what we did for the Baltic Bridge. This one is for the Ellis Road Bridge. And we're just doing it again so we can get a little bit ahead on the schedule and make sure that we're able to complete construction by the end of this summer. If you have any questions, I can answer them at this time.
Questions for DJ, Commissioner Heiburger?
Is this going to close that bridge, or will it be at one lane?
It will be closed.
It will be closed.
And we expect sometime shortly after the July 4th week.
Do you know what the detour looks like?
I haven't personally seen the detour yet, but I imagine that it goes one mile over to the east, or two miles over to the east, Marion Road.
Okay.
Commissioner Kelly?
Have you talked, I think it's Van Buschirk uses it a lot, or there's one of the big contractors that uses it a lot?
Several contractors that use it.
Have you talked to them?
We've had discussions with the multiple contractors and the Sioux Falls Contractors Association. They're very aware of the project. They're looking forward to it because right now they're not able to drive on that road with their loaded trucks.
Other questions for DJ? If not, there are action on item number seven.
Motion to approve the authorization to notice bids.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight are planning and zoning notices. Item A is the first reading and authorize county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider text amendments to Section 10 of the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County. Pat Herman.
Morning, Pat.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a request to rezone some property that's located in Split Rock Heights, I'm sorry, Split Rock Township. You can see it's outlined in red on the map. The petitioners own two parts of Perry Plan Development, two subareas. There was a farm, right there. And there was a farmstead on that, on that farm, which was taken down, and the petitioners wished to build it again. However, that sits in the floodplain, so it would not be ideal to rebuild in the exact same spot. So they want to build to the east in the red area. That area only allows one residential house, and there's one already there. So we are recommending a change to the plan development text for that subarea E, which would allow a second single-family dwelling there. This was before the Planning Commission on March 25th, and it's forwarded with a unanimous recommendation of approval. So today, action should be taken to have the auditor publish notice of a public hearing at 9:15 on April 23, 2003, to consider the amendments to this subarea.
Questions for Pam, Commissioner Heiburger?
Pat, so will it remove the building eligibility from the farmstead that was originally there in the floodplain?
Yeah, it really doesn't even have an eligibility. It kind of fell in the no man's definition because the farmstead was already there. But you're right, they could not rebuild in that location.
Okay.
Other questions for Pat? If not, we need a motion to publish.
Both to publish.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second to publish. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item B is the first reading and authorize county auditor to publish notice of hearing to consider a request to rezone property from the A1 Agricultural District to the RR Rural Residential District. Ryan Struck.
Morning, Ryan.
Morning, Commissioners. All right, again, this is the first reading. The applicants are proposing to rezone approximately 1 or 1.99 acres just west of Sioux Falls in Section 17 of Wayne Township. The request is to rezone property from A1 Agricultural to RR Rural Residential. This went forward to the Planning Commission on March 25th, and they voted 7-0 to deny this request as they felt the rezoning was not in conformance with the comprehensive plan or within the intent of the zoning ordinance. There are variety, or excuse me, a number of different eligibilities in that area. There is now one on this particular property. So they are, in turn, wanting to rezone this property to be able to build a home on this location. So essentially, it's giving them an eligibility. Action needs to be taken today to authorize the auditor to publish notice for this rezoning, 13001, on April 23, 2012, at 9:20 p.m. in this room.
Questions for Ryan? Again, this is the first reading. No questions? Any motions? We do not take public comment today. That would happen, correct, in the next conversation?
Both to set the hearing date.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second to set the hearing date. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item C is the first reading and authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider a request to rezone property from the A1 Agricultural District to the I1 Light Industrial District. Dustin Powers.
Morning, Commissioners. Dustin, from County Planning Department. Anita Preheim has submitted an application to rezone property from A1 Agricultural to I1 Light Industrial. The property is located 1/3 mile east of the intersection of South Dakota Highway 11 and South Dakota Highway 42. That's the Iverson Crossing intersection next to that subdivision. This is Preheim Nursery and Landscaping on the east side of town. You may be familiar with the business. They are looking to rezone the property to Light Industrial for the purpose of sale. At the Planning Commission meeting on March 25th, the Planning Commission advanced a recommendation of denial with a 6 to 1 vote, and those minutes were provided in your meeting materials. So today is just the first reading, and action should be taken to authorize the auditor to publish notice of the public hearing on April 23, 2013, at 9:30 a.m. in this room.
Thank you, Dustin. Is any questions for Dustin? Again, this is the first reading, so we need a motion to publish the notice.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion to publish the notice. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Dustin.
Item nine is petition for compromise of lien. Commissioner Pecos.
Thank you, Cindy. This is on DPNO 38204 in the amount of $4,425.79. The applicant currently is requesting a compromise of the lien. The lien was discovered during a title search of the individual, the applicant's property and his current wife, as they are trying to prepare for a refinancing on their home mortgage. And that is scheduled for the third week of April. And they are seeking to compromise the lien upon payment of $2,000. The lien is actually in the name of the applicant and his ex-wife for utility assistance and medical expenses incurred between the years 1997 and 1998. In 2000, the couple divorced. The applicant currently indicates that he and his current wife are not able to refinance their mortgage. They will actually lose their home. So they are, of course, attempting to try to refinance. And they list a total assets of $173,339, consisting primarily of the value of the home. Their liabilities include $169,806, including their current mortgage, and other debts payable from local financial institutions and other individuals. They have two minor children, and last year they had a gross income of $43,000. The applicant currently states that he would have made payments on the lien if he knew it existed, but he was unaware of the debt. Of course, the commission reviewed the original applications, and of course, the applicant did sign on the acceptance form that he understood that he was receiving that utility assistance totaling $110. And his ex-wife also signed the authority to go ahead and get medical assistance in the amount of $4,315.79. So that's the total of $4,425.79. They are offering only $2,000 towards closing of the costs, and they'll probably wrap that into the new mortgage that they get on their property. I am prepared to make a motion for $2,212.90.
A second, Dan.
We have a motion and a second. I have questions for Commissioner Pecos, Commissioner Kelly.
Well, it appears that he's behind on his child support. There's a $17,000 money owed to others there. They've got three cars. They could easily sell one of the cars to make up that $2,400. And I'm not going to support the motion. I think there's adequate assets there to do this. The excuse that he didn't know about it, obviously, is not valid because he did sign the papers going into the thing. This occurred all before the divorce, so the money is there.
Mr. McFarland.
I do have some information regarding that. The couple was separated at the time that the major medical bill was, in fact, incurred. And so, and in fact, when the ex-wife went in to sign for the, probably for assistance, she was originally applying for utility assistance, and this did come up as part of the process as well. So the husband, at the time that they said they were separated, was not aware that the medical assistance was granted. And so, and again, they are making, he is making the request that the lien just be compromised in full, you know, against his ex-wife, against him, and just to clean it up for the $2,000, particularly because of the age of the lien.
Questions for Ken, Commissioner Heiburger?
Can't remove the remaining balance onto the ex-wife?
And that is not the request. You can, but he is simply requesting that he'd just like to put this totally behind and just clean up the lien for the payment of the, now, $2,200, which is half.
Commissioner Kelly?
Ken, did you, that was a medical claim, right?
It was.
Was it for the child or for the mother?
It was for the ex-wife.
Carol, would you like to make a comment?
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, County Human Services. Just for clarification, and if I, I only heard half the conversation, and if I'm wrong, if I assume something, please let me know. But in the case of medical, because of the proof on there, it may or may not have been signed. Because how it goes with burden of proof goes to the hospital, and that may have been done. So there may not necessarily have been a signature on medical.
Yeah.
Because the hospitals can sue us.
For utilities, that was the original applicant's.
Yes, yeah. But the big chunk of that one is for a medical bill. Just for clarification.
Thank you. If the applicant is here, no, then I don't have to go through that speech. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other questions for Commissioner Pecos? If not, I think we'll need a roll call vote. I think the motion was for $2,212.90.
And 90 cents.
90 cents.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Pecos?
Yes.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes. Motion passes 3 to 1. Item, oh, I'm sorry, the opportunity for public comment. If there's any individuals here that would like to make comments about anything that's not on the agenda, we're willing to listen to that. If not, we'll move to the next item. Don't see anyone coming, so item 10.
Regular business. Item 10 is a public hearing to consider an application to consume and blend alcoholic beverages on May 21, 2013, at the Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum, 1900 Perry Place, Sioux Falls, for a fundraising event. And the auditor's office has forwarded this application to the State's Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Office, planning and zoning, and there were no concerns or objections reported. Lori Kiso is here, in case you have any questions for her regarding the request.
Good morning, Lori. Would you like to make a comment?
No, I'm just here to ask a question for her.
Sometimes that's the best strategy.
Is today the public hearing?
No.
Yes.
Oh, yes, it is, okay. Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application. Ken has it.
Just a reminder, since this is the public hearing, to see if there's anyone who has any comments.
Good, thank you. Anybody from the audience like to make a comment? If not, we have the motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
You can stay, Lori.
Item 11 is a public hearing to consider adoption of three books of the 2012 International Building Code. Pat Herman.
Good morning again, Commissioners. These are three separate ordinances, so we will need three separate votes today. The first adoption would be of the, and I want to say also that Paul Clark, our Chief Building Inspector, is here in the corner back there, and if you have technical questions, please direct those towards him. The first adoption is the 2012 International Building Code, the IBC Code. Currently, we are under the 2009 version, and this is an update to the newest version. This code covers everything except one and two family dwellings and townhouses. I gave you copies that did have comments in red to kind of explain the changes that are being made. Many of the changes are things that we just need to insert, like saying that we are Minnehaha County and that this is under the control of the Planning Department, mentioning our floodplains, maps, and things like that. We also have pretty much a lot of references in there to the legacy code, and this is just a continuation of the codes from the original UBC code that we've adopted. And we remain constant on some of those things and don't change them with the updates to the new code. So I guess I would ask if there are any questions. Otherwise, ask for approval of adoption for the 2012 International Building Code.
Any questions for Pat? Commissioner Kelly?
Pat, I know there's a lot of just technical changes in there, but are there any changes that will increase the cost of construction? And if so, how much?
Yeah, that's a pretty hard question to ask.
Well, it is, it is. Except I get tired of these things coming in every three years, and we just raise the cost of construction. And I realize it's not single-family, but it is apartments and--
I think probably most of the things we didn't change, you know, like the size of egress windows and the heights and those, so there wouldn't be an added cost. There may be a few, but it might be something that's, you know, a few more cents or--
Has anybody looked at it to see what the costs were?
I think it's pretty hard. I don't know how you would do that, to measure. Because some of it's the cost of materials, which go up every year, you know, that we have no control over, so.
This reminds me of Nancy Pelosi's speech, but, all right, you know, it's so voluminously--
I'm going to take that as a compliment.
No, not your speech. The whole, you know, it's so big, we--
Thank you for handling that well.
I didn't intend that directed at you.
I would like to give you an answer, but it's pretty hard, you know, judging on all the changes that are made. Some are, you know, a lot of them are just constant. They were keeping constant, but that's why we have to do changes, you know, to say we're not adopting the code.
When you go to securing grass and egress doors and smoke hallways and stuff like that, all of that does add up.
Sure it does.
And I can never get an answer on what.
Right.
And it's not only here, I mean, this goes back 15 years ago when I was on the city council.
I will say that Paul did go and speak to the Sulan Builders Committee, and they were not opposed to the changes, so.
Commissioner Heiburger?
I read it. I had to run around my house and check a few things and say, does this really comply? It was interesting but boring and way too long. But a lot of those changes, I think, are things that have been in our codes for a long, long, long time. And it's just, you had to update it because this is a national code, and you just make it fit for Minnehaha County. It's not that there were significant changes to what we've been doing in the past.
Right.
Thank you. Other comments?
Well--
Commissioner Pecos?
Isn't it true that we tried to make our particular building codes copacetic with the city of Sioux Falls, and the city of Sioux Falls already adopted these?
Yes, exactly. They will be putting this in at the same time, and then a lot of the small towns will follow suit as well, so that for builders that work throughout the county, they're under the same code.
Other comments or questions?
Well, just one last parting comment. I think we better keep in mind that every time we do this, and I know the, you know, nobody is, Cindy excluded, but I mean, to read this entire document, and I don't know if this is the whole document or if there's more--
Well, there's a huge book, but these are really the ones that we're changing, right?
And I guess we just complain and complain that there's no affordable housing, and then we go ahead and pass laws that make affordable housing impossible. And yes, I believe the safety standards are, but this is South Dakota, not New York. And I just think at some point, we've got to be addressing this more specifically than we are, we have been in the past many years, if we want to, unless we want to continue to see our inflationary costs in housing go like they have.
Other comments? Chair's privilege, I will say that I didn't read the whole document, but I did read the redlined items. And frankly, from my perspective, I'm not a builder, but I also think the Advisory Council goes through those with detail. They are part of the building industry, and they know more about it than I think I will. So I have no problem with those issues or concerns. I don't think there's anything significant in that. Maybe we should do a roll call vote?
We need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Sorry.
We need three motions.
Yeah, it's a public hearing.
We need public comment, too.
So we get to see you again, correct? Anybody, anyone from the audience wishing to make comments about item 11 in the International Building Code? No one's coming forward?
I'll make my motion.
Thank you.
We need three motions.
Yeah, we'll have to do this individually. We have to vote on this one first.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes.
I'll make a motion now on the International Residential Code.
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions for Pat? Anyone in the public interested in making comments or asking questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. And the last item?
I make a motion for the International existing Building Code and amendments.
Paul, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any one, again, from the public like to make comments or ask questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Pat.
Item number 12 is consider appeal of a decision by Minnehaha County Human Services to deny virtual assistance on case number 50695. This was deferred from the March 26, 2013, meeting. Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Human Services. Mr. Cummings left a voicemail yesterday for myself, which I passed on to Ken McFarland, that he asked to have this withdrawn.
All right. I'll make a motion to withdraw it.
I'll second that.
Is there a reason why he asked to have this withdrawn?
Change in circumstance for the woman. She's ended up leaving town.
Maybe that voucher came through. All right, so I'll make a motion to withdraw.
To withdraw?
Yes, to withdraw. Any questions for Carol, other than what we already know? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign Human Services Department agreement between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County. Carol Muller.
The contract that you have in front of you is the annual agreement that we did with, that we do with Lincoln County. We've been doing it for several years to provide their human services, and nothing changed in there except for the salary numbers being updated. Otherwise, everything else is the same. Our staff person, we have a staff person down there two days a week, on Tuesdays and Thursdays. The other days, Lincoln County residents can come up here and be seen by any of our caseworkers. So we've been able to accommodate them, and it's been a good working relationship.
Wow. I'll make that motion.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the agreement between Lincoln County and Minnehaha County, and thank you for your efforts in making that happen. It's another good example of government trying to work together.
And we'll be down there in the next hour and a half signing the agreement down there. So I'll be taking care of the day.
Good, thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 14 is consider a resolution to participate in the South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Inspection Program using South Dakota DOT Bridge Replacement Funds. D.J. Boothey.
Morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This resolution is simply to get the ball rolling with the Department of Transportation, to notify them that we wish to participate in their bridge inspection program, and that we wish to use Civil Design Inc., again, of Brookings, South Dakota. That's who we used last year. This year is, is the light year of the bridge inspections. Last year, we completed around 200 of them, and this year, there's significantly less because most of those structures are inspected every two years. And so, we just have a handful of them to do this year, and this, like I said, we'll just get the process started with the, with the DOT.
Any questions for D.J.?
Move to participate.
A motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any other questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15 is consider a motion to authorize the purchase of weed control chemicals in the amount of $37,544.40 for Minnehaha County Weed Control Department from contracts competitively bid and awarded by the state of South Dakota. Ralph Hammer.
Good morning, Mr. Hammer.
Good morning, Commissioners. This just stamped chemicals were used to control noxious weeds and derived oil.
Any questions for Ralph?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the contract. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thanks for commenting.
Item 16 is consider a resolution restoring Minnehaha County Tax Deed 1704 to the former owner of record.
Good morning, Bob.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. Minnehaha County holds under tax deed proceedings. Tax deed number 1704, RDID 52490. Minnehaha County Treasurer has received payment from a bank called One Main Financial on the fiduciary interests of Wayne O'Neillson for the amount $11,915.30. This does represent all taxes, assessments, interest, and costs owing on the tax deed. I would also tell you that the assessments thing in there is kind of new because we've had trouble from the city before trying to find out the up-to-date assessments, but Rich and I went over there last month and talked to them, and we kind of got a gentleman's agreement worked out, and we think we've got a situation working where these assessments are going to come in on time now. The action requested today is we'd, we'd ask that you approve the resolution restoring the tax deed to the former owner of record, Wayne O'Neillson, and authorizing the county treasurer to issue a quitclaim deed.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions for him?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. No other questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign as nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item 17 is to authorize the chairman to sign Amendment Number 1 to the 2013 agreement with the South Dakota Department of Social Services for clinically managed residential detoxification services. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, we have a current contract with the South Dakota Department of Social Services for detox services in the amount of $126,210. I will remind you that for this year, that was an increase from just under $90,000 the prior year for detoxification services, and these are dollars that we bill when we receive detox clients. This current contract expires on May 31, 2013. Now, we have been notified by the department that our, our bed usage at this time is probably not going to rise to the level of securing all of those state dollars, and it's probably more commensurate with what we were billing and receiving the prior year. And so, the state in their reallocation of funds, and that would like to amend this contract so they can free up those dollars for other needs, and that based on our level of activity to date. And they would like to amend this contract down to $96,210. And again, this would be in effect until the end of May of this year. And we will expect a new contract from them, probably will arrive in the next month or so. So this is just an amendment on the current contract to more accurately reflect what our billings have been for detox services. And again, it's commensurate with the former allocation that we used to get, which was just under 90 the year before.
Thank you, Ken. Questions, Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment that I don't think Ken said, and to date, we've only spent six, just about $65,000 of that allocation, so we are not going to be spending it all by the end of May. It's just to free up that money for the state.
Commissioner Kelly?
Can things as current on the submitted billings, so there's no arrears on this?
No, this is...
As of March 14th, that's where we were at, that $64,000.
That's what we have submitted and received back. Now, of course, we've got other billings in place right now that we haven't received monies for, and we will have other billings, you know, through the end of, up through the end of May. But this is...
But that was my question then, though. What, what have we built out that we haven't?
You know, and that, I'll have to check where the last...
Are we on track with the 65 to be less than 96?
I think we are, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I thought I saw Scott Peters back there. Scott, do you have any comments?
No? No.
Okay. Any other questions for Ken or other replies? I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Commissioners, as we're waiting for the laptop to come up for agenda item number 18, could I suggest we handle number 19?
Absolutely.
Okay. As you know, the commission did receive a letter, and that from the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, that it said that the Board of Directors of the Association is endorsing the establishment of a Veteran and Military Affairs Committee. And that, so they are asking for each county to assign a representative of the county to serve on that committee. They expect that that committee will meet probably twice a year in conjunction with the spring workshop that typically takes place, and then the annual convention. Based on your discussion last week, we had, you had indicated your desire to see Pat Crouppa, who is our current county veteran service officer, serve in that capacity. I discussed this with both Pat and for, and with Carol Muller, and they are both agreeable to having Pat serve in that capacity. So, we would request a, excuse me, we would request a opportunity to appoint Pat as the representative to the committee.
Questions for Pat? For Pat? She's not here, she can't have any questions. Questions for Ken?
Just a comment that I also had talked to Pat, and she is definitely the best qualified person for this position in the county, so... And with that being said, I will make a motion to approve, Pat.
Say aye.
Very good. Any other questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Are we ready for 18?
We are almost.
Why don't we go to Commissioner Layzon reports while we're waiting? Any of the Commissioners have any reports to be made? How about new business? Any new business? Old business? It's your turn.
It's my turn. Commissioners, last week, we briefed you on some of the proposed changes that, that we presented regarding both the long-range planning process and the annual budget process. We detailed for you some of the new forms that we are implementing. The most recent one was the long-range plan format. That is already in department heads' hands, they are using that form. As I told you, you know, the big questions that are coming that form is the definition of the units of service that each department is trying to define for themselves. And if they can't define that as a unit of service, and that they'll state on that form why their department does not lend itself to that definition. But the main thing, and we also detailed for you the forms that we're going to use for the outside agency funding applications. And that's a little bit more of a detailed form. And basically, we're moving that process up by a month in order to kickstart the budget process, as well as our attempt to also start with preliminary revenue estimates for the budget about a month early as well. The biggest change that you talked about, and that generated the most discussion last week, was right at the very end, is the process to use, and I'll see if I can blow this up a little bit, is the process that you would use to determine the elected official salaries. And this really has two parts. Is that for existing elected officials, you are establishing a process that would take place during the budget hearing process to set those flat rates for each of the elected department heads. Because as you know, those elected department heads do not receive a step increase commensurate with other department heads or other employees of the county. And we've also built in some assurances here that under no circumstances will the salary of any elected department head be lowered during their term or consecutive terms of office. And that's also consistent with state law. I don't think the commission or even any of the elected officials have any serious concerns with that section of the proposed policy. What did get some discussion from the commission last week is the second paragraph about how you might perhaps bring in and determine the salary for a, a new person that might potentially come into that position in, in an election. And that those flat rates would be reviewed prior to that election and you determine, and that going into that race. And that this gives you the option for a newly elected official, none of the current ones, but a newly elected official. And it's a proposal that came from some of the Commissioners here as well, that you could bring in that department, elected department head, at up to 10% below the established flat rate for the position. And then, there's a process to move that person up by 2.5% each year during their term to get to that flat rate in that, for the department. And so that in the final year of their first term, they would be at the established rate for that position. And that, so, I guess that is the main thing that generated some conversation from this group. And we are bringing the policy, the whole policy back for your consideration and adoption. I know that we have, there may be some elected officials here that may want to talk about this issue again. And then I know you did receive some comments from the Treasurer last week about the proposal, et cetera, but they've all had a chance to review this policy.
Thank you, Commissioner Heiburger.
I just have a question on the first part of that, Ken. You know, where the line that says under no circumstances can salaries, you know, that they can lower them during their terms. Remember when we did our budget a few years ago, and they elected, they voted as elected officials to lower there? Is that still available, or will that be no longer available?
And that, that is really, you know, that was a voluntary move that the, that those elected officials made at that particular time, you know, in response to your budget difficulties. But this policy is consistent with state law that does not give you the discretion to impose a lower salary on an elected official during their term of office. And that, so state law prohibits you from doing that, and that, and this policy also reinforces that. But they did it strictly on a voluntary basis. And I would not see that this would be in conflict with that as long as it was voluntary. But you could not impose it.
Okay.
That was my question.
Thank you. Other questions, Commissioner Kelly?
Well, on the, on the 10% thing, and I don't know if Pam was the only one that's gone under, if there were others, but, you know, when we look at that in any given four-year cycle, if you had two turnover, which would be a lot, we're talking, what, maybe $20,000 on a $65 million budget? I, I'm really not sure this is a problem. Who are we up here, the five, to determine whether somebody is qualified or not qualified to be an elected official? We aren't. And I just think if, if there's some concern there, that to me is not really very important in the whole, the whole scheme.
You know, and the reason that this did bubble up, you know, and again, this came at the suggestion of some of the Commissioners from this table. And that the reason this came up is again, that number one, department heads aren't on the step plan. But also...
Elected officials.
Or, excuse me, elected officials are not on the step and grade plan. But, and that, and again, when, and I use myself as an example, and this is why this policy was presented. You know, when I retired, and that, you know, who knows, maybe you will, but it would be highly unlikely because of my years of service and experience and where I am at on the step and grade plan, that you would not bring in a new person, and that at particularly that same level. And that was the, at least the thought and the theory behind this second part of the policy here, this last paragraph, to make that also commensurate with perhaps a newly elected official as well.
But I would argue that we have control over who we hire for a department head. We have no control over who's elected. And therefore, I'm not sure it's our decision to determine whether they're worth 90 or 95 or 100% of salary.
Other questions for Ken? Commissioner Pecos?
Well, I, I was against this last week, and I still haven't been swayed to endorse that second part of this particular policy. I do believe that our goal, when we went out and we had these positions reviewed by Condry and Associates, was to get the best, most accurate pay for these positions and similar positions within the region were compiled to actually determine what that amount was. And then we actually looked at that, we did make some adjustments after those recommendations were made, some higher, some lower. For example, the Commissioners all got lowered by roughly, well, let's see, I think it came back at $31,000, and we lowered it to, what, 20 at the time? So, and that was, what, four or five years ago? So, the goal here was that we would go back and we would review these when these terms came up to reevaluate them and get an accurate cost for them. To go ahead and to actually look at a person's set salary through Condry and Associates, and to turn and to minimize that by roughly 10% on some sort of electoral whim of the commission or some sort of determination that, you know, we're, we have this huge vote of confidence, so we're dinging your salary by 10%, I think sends the wrong message, not only to the elected person as part of the county team, for lack of a better term, but also it undermines the Condry study that we have and we adopted. And so, I can't support it at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any of the elected officials who are here want to make comments? We certainly would like to hear from them. If not, we understand that also. Commissioner Heiburger, I'm sorry. You're gonna have to wave more.
Just a comment, you know, I appreciate the, the work that you guys put into, in the thought and the effort into putting this together, because I think that you had been asked by, I mean, I, I know that you had been asked by people, but I guess I kind of agree with the same thing. I don't know that I'm qualified to tell somebody who's been elected that gee, I don't like what you do, and you haven't even started your job yet. I know I wouldn't have been very happy if I would have come on this job, although I think I did get my salary cut the first year I came on. But you, and not that you really pay attention to that, that's not why you're running for a public office. But if you get there in your first day of work, they say, "Oh gee, we're gonna take a 10% cut because you didn't work here last week." I don't know that that's entirely fair. And with the Condry study there, we can reevaluate, if we need to, we can reevaluate those particular positions every four years, if that's what we need to do, and we can find out if we're still in, you know...
In the market.
With, in the market with everyone else, so...
Other comments?
I would like to stress that that paragraph, we crafted the language at the request of folks from this table. We didn't make it up ourselves, so...
Doesn't mean that we have to agree with it.
That's correct.
Or in retrospect.
I think it's good to have some options. I think it's good to have some options, but frankly, I think some of the comments that have been made already are very appropriate, because frankly, we don't know what the market's going to be like in two, three, four years, and that changes all the time. It needs to have some flexibility in it, and I think this is a little too restrictive.
I think the first paragraph gives you...
Yep.
...that ability for any of the elected officials, and establishes that process and sets those parameters by which you will look at it.
Commissioner Kelly?
I'd make a motion to accept the suggested changes to the long term, with the exception of deleting the second paragraph of item D.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any other comments? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just had to comment. I thought that they said to go another week before we were supposed to discuss this. I mean, before we were supposed to make a motion. Am I wrong?
Oh, no, we, we briefed last week.
Okay.
This was the intended time period in order to, yes, that you can certainly do that this week.
If I might, I'd like just to make a comment about the outside agency application. I appreciate Ken and other people who put time into that. When I reviewed that, one of the things that was apparent to me, I guess, was the fact that we spent all of our application emphasis, if you will, on the revenue side of the programs, and nothing about the expense side, which to me is just as important, frankly, as the other pieces of that. So when the application got changed, it'll give us a total picture of what an agency is responsible for, and what kind of reserves they have, or foundation dollars, or whatever. So I think it gives us more of a complete picture. The units of service thing, I think, will work itself out over a period of time, because units of service, frankly, gives people like us an indication of growth in responsibilities of the departments, and that is the best indicator of understanding what challenges those departments have. So other comments? If not, we have a motion to approve with the amendment of deleting the second paragraph in item D. We'll do a roll call vote, just to be sure.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pecas?
Yes.
Bennigan?
Yes. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you for all your work on that. We've done old business, new business. I think we're ready for adjournment. Is that correct?
You have an exec.
I do have one comment. Michelle, I know you were avoiding us at the beginning of this conversation. The fact that you've been here for 20 years didn't go unnoticed, even if it seems like 40, and it's been 20. Thank you for your years of service. We do appreciate that.
Can't believe she started here when she was nine years old.
That's right. You were sweeping floors, weren't you?
How'd you get a gun permit that young? Anyway, we're needing to go into exec session for contract negotiations and legal briefing.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
We have a motion to go into exec session. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.